The call to order, the Board of Appeals meeting. Could we all stand for a moment of silent meditation, salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Yep, so before I read off what petition one is, we're just gonna do a little bit of housework because we've got a lot of people in the cloud right now, so if I can bring them out of the cloud and into reality, I want to speak with the court reporter right now. Hello?
Hello?
Hello, this is Chairman Year. I know you were asking some questions before the meeting started, who's here, if you want, go ahead and ask us what you'd like and we'll answer some questions so we can get the...
Sure, absolutely, yeah, so Chairman Year, I just want to, need to get everybody's name, so Mr. Yuri is the chair, Mr. Spazato I see, right?
Yes.
Hi, okay, and who's sitting next to Mr. Spazato, to his right?
Yep, that's Chip Heel.
Hale.
Hale.
H A L E?
H E I L.
Thank you, H E I L, and then Mr. Yuri, and then who's sitting to your right, Mr. Yuri?
Mr. York.
Yep, Mr. York.
York, Y O R K?
Correct.
Okay, and then the gentleman here on the end with the red shirt.
Dan Harrington.
Dan Harrington, and then who is the solicitor tonight?
Per Vaj.
Is that Boggi?
Boggi, sorry, I can't pronounce any...
Spell that, please.
First name is P E R.
B, I'm sorry, one more time, I can't hear you.
E isn't Peter, E isn't Edward, R is in Richard.
Okay.
M V isn't Victor.
Yeah.
As in Adam, G isn't George, E is an Edward.
Okay, very good, okay, thank you, I just need to know all the members, thank you very much.
Okay, was there another hand before we get started? I don't know if that was Ms. Hogan speaking.
Yeah, they put their hands back down.
Okay.
And they like to bring, be brought closer so that they can hear you.
Okay, so if I could, for any of our guests that are out in the virtual world, if they could address their name when they're speaking so that we can have clarification for the stenographer who's actually speaking, because it's gonna get very confusing, we haven't done too many of these virtual meetings, we've been meeting in person, so it's a little easier when we can actually see everyone, but with that being said, I would like to call in petition one, which is a petition filed on an appeal of the decision of the Hoffman Planning Board filed by Revity Energy LLC, appealing two of the conditions set by the planning board granting the developmental plan for a photovoltaic solar energy system located at 15 Frontier Road and identified as a Sessors Platte 7 lots 62, 62A, and 63, filed by Revity Energy LLC, in accordance with Rhode Island General Law 452367 as amended. Also, at the start of this, I'd just like to take a few minutes to, at the start of the hearing, to lay out the procedures for this appeal to the zoning board of appeals, and if Attorney Boggi can correct me if I'm wrong at any point, this evening we'll be hearing legal arguments only from the appellant, Revity Energy, and the appealee, Hoffman Planning Board regarding two of the conditions set by the planning board when granting the developmental plan for a photovoltaic solar energy system at 15 Frontier Road in Ashway. These conditions, in summary, are number five, which is regarding vegetative buffering along Maxon Hill Road, and number 26 regarding the hours of construction and operation. During the proceedings, the board is to hear only evidence that is on the record and should not receive or consider any new evidence or factual testimony. The board is not to decide if the planning board was wrong, but was there a procedural or legal error or insufficient evidence on the record to support their findings and conclusions. This is further detailed as stated within the land development subdivision regulations as follows. So, powers of the Board of Appeal, the Board of Appeal shall have the following powers: to hear and decide appeals where it is alleged there is an error in any order, requirement, decision, or determination made by the planning board or the town planner in the enforcement of regulations. Use of powers, and exercising its powers, the Board of Appeal may reverse or affirm wholly or partly, or may modify the decision appealed from and make such order. Requirement, decision, or determination as ought to be made, and to that end shall have all the powers of the planning board or town planner from whom the appeal was taken. The board shall render a decision on the appeal in the following manner. The board shall not substitute its own judgment for that of the planning board or the town planner, but shall consider the issue upon the findings and record of the planning board or town planner. The board shall not reverse a decision of the board or town planner except in a finding of prejudicial procedural error, clear error, or lack of support by weight of the evidence in the record. The concurring votes of three of the five members of the Board of Appeal sitting at the hearing shall be necessary to reverse any decision of the planning board or town planner. In the instance where the Board of Appeal overturns a decision of the planning board or town planner, the proposed project application shall be remanded to the planning board or town planner at the stage of processing from which the appeal was taken, for further proceedings before the planning board or town planner, and/or for final disposition, which shall be consistent with the Board of Appeal's decision. With that being said, do we have the appellant present?
You want to move to open the public hearing?
Okay, could we entertain a motion to...
So, move.
Okay, is any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is open, we have, Nick is the attorney for Revity, I believe?
Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I can, could you state your name and who you're representing? If I'm correct, I believe you're with Revity?
That's correct. My name is Nick Nybo, Nybo spelled N Y B as in boy, O, and I am the Senior Legal Counsel for Revity Energy LLC, the appellant in this matter. On the call along with me is Ralph Palumbo, the President of Revity Energy, as well as other executives at the company, and joining me as well is outside counsel Karen Browning from Moses Ryan, Attorney Browning was the Revity's lead counsel during the planning board process, and she's available after I finish my presentation to discuss any issues that I might have missed or answer any questions that she's in a better position to answer, having gone through this process from start to finish with Revity. Mr. Chair, as you identified, we're here this evening on an appeal from the planning board's October 21, 2020 vote to approve the development plan for an 11.3 megawatt direct current photovoltaic solar energy system located at 15 Frontier Road. This is a by right development located in the commercial and manufacturing zone within the town. As is reflected throughout the appellate record on this matter, the applicant and the planning board put in a substantial amount of time, effort, and work during the six DPR meetings for this application. Ultimately, in approving Revity's application for DPR application, the planning board imposed 26 conditions on Revity's development of this property and the facility. Now, the applicant is here this evening to challenge two of those 26 conditions. The first condition is condition number five, and that condition reads, quote, "The existing vegetation within the 100-foot setback area along Maxon Hill Road will remain in place and be supplemented with additional planting of evergreen trees of a minimum of six feet of height at the time of planting as set forth in the approved landscape plan," end quote. The second condition that is being appealed this evening is condition number 26, and that condition reads, quote, "All site work shall be performed Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Eastern Standard Time." Now, the applicant's legal arguments in opposition to these two conditions have been fully briefed through Revity's, through Revity's November 10, 2020 notice of appeal, as well as our February 4, 2021 reply memorandum, and I don't intend to take up this board's valuable time repeating all of those arguments, I know that the board has reviewed much of it and it will be prepared to issue its decision. I certainly welcome any and all questions about any of those arguments that you may have at any point tonight, but there are a few particularly important items that I want to touch upon this evening. So, the first condition I want to discuss is condition number 26, and that condition limits site work hours to 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Now, it's important to emphasize that this condition arose really for the first time during the penultimate DPR hearing on September 2, 2020, and the transcript of that hearing is Exhibit K to our notice of appeal. Now, Revity, through Attorney Browning, immediately objected to the inclusion of this condition, and the planning board solicitor gave his preliminary opinion that the planning board was without legal authority to limit site plan work in this fashion. However, three weeks later, the planning board solicitor wrote to applicant's counsel, Attorney Browning, advising her that the solicitor had reversed his position and concluded that the planning board did in fact have the legal authority to limit site work hours, and less than two days after that correspondence, the planning board conducted its final...
Excuse me, this is the court reporter, this is the court reporter. I'm getting, I'm getting that Maggie Hogan is talking and it's going over Mr. Nybo, and I'm not getting Mr. Nybo, I'm having some, I don't know if she's not muted or what, but it comes up Maggie Hogan is talking, and it's making the record unclear, if I could somehow get that fixed. Thank you.
Our clerk's gonna try and mute Maggie.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Nybo.
No, of course not, thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Shepherd, is there any point that I, particularly that I lost you at?
You mentioned the planning board did have legal authority to limit the site work hours?
Okay, thank you, so, three weeks after the September 2, 2020 meeting, the planning solicitor wrote to applicant's counsel, Attorney Browning, advising her that he had reversed his position regarding the authority of the planning board, and had concluded that the board did indeed have the authority to limit site work hours to 8 to 5:00 p.m. And then, less than 10 days later, on October 7, the planning board conducted its final meeting and approved that condition among 26 others. Now, the town's operative solar ordinance contains no restrictions on site work hours, and in fact, there's no authority to limit site work hours for by right projects within the town. The planning board's limitation here significantly harms Revity's ability to comply with the one to two-year deadlines that are actually contained in the DPR ordinances. Now, the planning board has contended that the authority to impose this condition arises from Section 1.4.6 of the town subdivision regulations, which states, quote, "These regulations are the minimum requirements, more stringent requirements may be instituted if, in the planning board's opinion, they are necessary to promote the public health, safety, general welfare, and protection of the rural character of the town." Accordingly, the planning board contends that regardless of what is actually required, or more importantly, not required by state law and the zoning ordinances, or any of the subdivision regulations themselves, the planning board can impose any requirement so long as it determines it is necessary for the general public welfare. Now, this interpretation, in applicant's opinion, runs into two critical legal roadblocks. First, the Rhode Island Supreme Court in a 1970 decision called Picciarelli, P I C C E R E L L I, v. Zoning Board of Barrington, Site 266, Atlantic 2, 249, in that case, the round Supreme Court stated that where a town council has approved a use as by right, the legislature has foreclosed any and all inquiry as to whether the use that has been approved as by right is adverse to the general welfare of the public. So, stated differently, by approving a use as by right, the legislature has as a matter of law decided that that use is not adverse to the public welfare. So, it is improper for the planning board to use the public welfare condition, or analysis, I should say, to review a by right development such as the applicant's here. The second issue with the planning board's analysis of condition number 26 is that the courts have recognized that zoning laws are generally in conflict with common law and constitutional property rights of the landowner, and therefore, those zoning laws must be carefully drafted so that property owners know in advance what will be required of them. Rhode Island State Law, specifically Rhode Island General Law's 45-24-49B, limit planning board's authority to impose DPR restrictions on by right projects to only those restrictions that are based on objective criteria. Section 1.4.6 is not based on objective criteria. It is based on whether the planning board believes, in its subjective view, that whatever is being imposed is necessary to promote the general welfare. Under the planning board's interpretation of Section 1.4.6, the planning board could limit site work to one day a month, if that's what they determined was necessary to promote the general welfare. This cannot be how the Town of Hopkinton subdivision regulations operate. There are 231 pages carefully articulating the requirements and standards to be relied upon during the planning process within the Town of Hopkinton, and the planning board cannot simply come in at the penultimate hearing and start adding new requirements. Even more importantly, in this case, there is no objective evidence that supported the conclusion by the planning board that the general welfare required site work limitations from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. There was no testimony from neighbors or butters stating that there was objective need for this site work limitation. In fact, the only objective evidence that was presented that even touched upon the question of site work was the evidence presented by the applicant, was a report that is in the record submitted by Sage, a consultant for applicant Sage Environmental, and that report said that even at the height of construction, the sound at the project would not exceed the 40 decibel level that the Hopkinton town regulations set forth for sound. So, there is absolutely no requirement, even if there was legal authority for the town to impose, the planning board I should say, to impose this restriction, there was no objective evidence that supported the need for that restriction. Now, the last point I want to make on this first condition, condition number 7, 26, is with regards to the issue of prejudice. Now, the planning board has argued that the applicant has not established how this delaying construction would prejudice the applicant. The applicant attempted to articulate, through Attorney Browning, that this condition would delay construction by 25%, 6.7 months, I believe, was the argument, and the planning board has come back and said that a delay in construction is not enough to establish that there's prejudice arising from the alleged error. So, first, Section 45-24-68 of the general laws, which is the law governing the zoning board standard or review of the planning board, does not require an appellant to establish that it has been prejudiced when the appellant is arguing that there was clear legal error. If we were arguing that there was procedural error, i.e. there was improper notice or that public comment was closed too soon, then the statute requires that the applicant, the appellant established not only the error, but a subsequent prejudice as well. That is not what we are arguing. We are arguing that there has been a clear, there's been two clear legal errors by the planning board, one, in interpreting its authority to impose site work, and two, my next argument, in interpreting Section C1 of the solar ordinance. But even if we did have to establish that there's a prejudice, of course, the applicant has been prejudiced in this case. The site work restriction will delay the project significantly, and that delay will make construction financing more expensive, it will make finding a tax equity investor for the project more difficult, it will make the interconnection efforts that the developer has to go through with National Grid more complicated, which, in the current climate, is already complicated enough. So, to the extent that the board agrees with the planning board that a prejudice must be shown from this imposition of a condition beyond all authority, that is the prejudice, a delay in the project that is going to have significant financial harm and effects to the applicant here. So, without anything further, there's simply no authority to limit the site work to the hours of 8 to 5, the way that the planning board has done, and the approval should be modified to strike this condition. The second issue that I'd like to discuss this evening is condition number five, which requires Revity to maintain the existing vegetation within the 100-foot setback along Maxon Hill Road and further to supplement that buffer with additional plantings. Now, this dispute is a little different than the dispute regarding condition number 26, because unlike condition number 26, there is actually a section of the solar ordinance which touches upon this issue, and so this dispute, as to condition number five, turns on the proper legal interpretation of Section C1 of the operative solar ordinance. Now, Section C1, and I'm gonna read the section of the record, I hesitate to do so, but it is very important, the interpretation, so I will read it into the record, reads that in, quote, "In instances where a parcel is rezoned from RFR 80 to commercial or manufacturing use for the purpose of accommodating a PSES, which stands for solar, or photovoltaic solar energy system, PSES, a clearing of any existing vegetation on the subject parcel for the purpose of constructing, operating, and maintaining a PSES shall be limited to a maximum of 40% of the total area of the parcel. Clearing of any existing vegetation within the front, rear, and side yard setback areas is prohibited unless explicitly approved by the planning board. The PSES and equipment shall not have a significant adverse impact upon the soil's water resources, air quality, or other natural resources of the land or surrounding area." Now, the question before the zoning board here is whether the condition at the top of this section, which refers to instances where a parcel is rezoned from RFR 80 to commercial or manufacturing use, whether that condition applies not just to the first sentence, which restricts the total area clearing, but also applies to the second sentence, which prohibits setback clearing. The applicant believes that the proper interpretation of this ordinance dictates that that introductory caveat stating that the section only governs rezoned parcels applies equally to the second sentence as it does to the first, and the restriction on clearing in the setback zone is only applicable to rezoned parcels, which this application is not, there's no rezone here. Now, there's a couple reasons that support this interpretation of Section C1 of the solar ordinance. The first reason is in reference to Note 2 to the solar ordinance. Note 2 to the solar ordinance states that, quote, "The front yard setback of commercial or manufacturing district shall be maintained in a vegetated condition where commercial or manufacturing property abuts a residential zone district boundary, and rear setback abutting said residential property shall also be maintained in a vegetated condition." So, Note 2 says that where you have a by right use of solar in a commercial or manufacturing district, you still need to maintain your vegetated condition in the setback zone. That restriction serves absolutely no purpose if Section C1 limits all clearing in the setback zone for all solar projects regardless of whether they are by right or not. Section C1 and Note 2 come into harmony when you consider the fact that Section C1 only governs solar projects that require a zone variance, a rezoning, from RFR 80 to commercial or manufacturing use. That is the only situation that C1, this portion of C1, comes into play. If it is a by right use in a commercial or manufacturing district, then the limitation is found in Note 2, and that states that the setback zone shall be maintained in a vegetated condition. Now, obviously, maintaining a setback area in a vegetated condition is markedly different than a flat prohibition of all clearing. We know from reading Hopkinton's entire subdivision regulations that there is a significant, that vegetation by definition is not just limited to trees. Section 16.4.3, Section 13.5-75, and Section 17.2.4 all recognize that vegetative preservation is only required where feasible, practical, and/or necessary. Now, in this case, there was significant evidence presented that for the purpose of solar generation, and more importantly, for the maximization of the efficiency of the system, there needed to be some selective clearing regime put into place, i.e. some tree topping to maximize the amount of sun that outer panels would receive. This was a regime that was presented to the planning board, unlike the planning board here. The applicant is not taking an absolutist approach. We came to the planning board with a selective clearing regime that had been presented prior to the meeting to the town's engineers at Crossman, and which would have preserved the vegetated condition as referred to in Note 2, but also allowed for the applicant to maximize panel efficiency. Now, what we got back from the chairman, Mr. D'Orio, in response to our selective clearing regime was, his response, and I'm quoting, "Good for you." He was entirely uninterested in the work we had put in to try to balance the planning board's concern for maintaining a vegetated condition, but also the applicant's concern for maximizing this solar farm. He characterized our attempts to present this evidence as beating a dead horse and burning daylight. Now, Section C1 is not remotely clear enough for the planning board chair to have such a cavalierly dismissive response to the applicant's good faith attempts to find a workable solution in this matter. At the very least, at the very least, and I believe that the section is fairly clear when you examine it in context, but at the very least, Section C1 is vague as to whether it applies to a by right project, and a vague zoning regulation as a matter of black letter law must be construed in favor of the landowner and against the town, because it is the landowner whose property rights, whose rights to use its property in an economically beneficial way is potentially being infringed by the zoning regulation. Now, the planning board, through its papers, has proposed a variety of ways that Section C1 could have been drafted differently if it meant to limit its application to by right projects alone, and there are certainly ways that Section C1 could have been drafted better to clearly, to make it clear that they apply to all solar projects, if that's what it meant, but the important takeaway here is that the interpretive burden of an ambiguous zoning ordinance cannot, should not, and does not fall on the landowner. If there's any ambiguity, if this board finds that there's ambiguity in the application of Section C1, then the board needs to interpret Section C1 in the light most favorable to the landowner, because it is the landowner's rights to use its property that is being infringed upon in this case. Again, I would strongly encourage the board to review, and I know the board will review and likely has reviewed, the testimony and evidence presented by John Carter and Dave Russo as to the importance, for the purpose of maximizing efficiency of the project, the importance of selective clearing within the 100-foot setback, again, not clear cut, selective clearing so that the project can be most financially beneficial, not just to the applicant, but to the off takers for the project. Unless there are any additional questions, I will tender the floor to the planning board's counsel. I would ask indulgence to have the ability to briefly, briefly provide a rebuttal after the planning board's counsel is finished with her presentation. provide a rebuttal after the planning board's counsel is finished with her presentation. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nibou. Could you, do you recall the initial date of the application? The start? I think you got muted. Did you hear my question?
I did. You're looking for the application date?
Yeah, yeah, the initial date.
Allow me to consult my notes while Attorney Hogan presents, and I will certainly have that information for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Hogan, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, so give me a moment, because I have three devices going here.
I'm sorry, this is the court reporter again. Yeah, Maggie, there's a lot of reverb coming from you. I'm not sure why.
Right, I'm trying to determine which device I can use here, so just bear with me for a moment.
Okay.
If I lose you, I'll call you back. Can you hear me clearly now?
We're still getting, we're still getting feedback. We're getting an echo, Maggie.
Okay, give me a moment. Okay, I thought I had, thought I had this meeting.
Yep, Maggie, I think you're gonna have to drop just the one device.
Moving to that. Just wanted to make, wanted to make sure that you could hear me. All right, is that better now?
Yep.
That's okay now?
Yes. So actually, can I put you on hold for a second, because I think
Certainly.
I think one of the board members would like to ask Mr. Nibou a few questions.
So this is Chip Hale. I just had a question for Attorney Nibou. So with regard to your model with selective clearing, did you actually identify trees within the 100-foot buffer zone that you were in fact going to take down? Or was it just an open? Like, I'm not sure where. Yeah, like I'm just curious, what detail did you provide the planning board with respect to the trees that you were intending to cut down in that zoning board or in that buffer zone in order to maximize the economic gains of the property owner?
That's an excellent question. And so I would answer in a few ways. First of all, there was a shade analysis performed and presented to the planning board as part of the application. And if you'll bear with me, when Attorney Hogan begins, I will find the site so that you can refer to it. But there was a shade analysis performed that identified the maximum tree height that would be necessary to clear. And essentially, the analysis, as I understand it, is that a panel needs to be two times the distance away from a tree as the height of the tree itself. So it needs to be dubbed, so if, you know, a tree is, you know, 15 feet tall, the panel needs to be 30 feet away from that tree to maximize its efficiency. So that was the shade analysis performed and presented to the planning board. I would also add that there was a landscape buffer memorandum presented by Crosman to the town planner dated August 24, 2020. And that I have the site for, it's Exhibit S, S as in snake, to our appeal memorandum. And that articulates some of the details of the selective clearing regime. I want to answer your question clearly and say that we did not identify tree by tree which would need to be cleared or otherwise topped. Yeah. And frankly, that would have been far too difficult based on the fact that, you know, where we were in the project. But I would commend the board to look to Exhibit S with respect to the details of the selective clearing regime that were presented to the planning board. And I will, again, while Attorney Hogan is presenting, I will consult, go back and try to find the site for the shading analysis that was done to provide the zoning board sufficient information. I would also add, it is marginally responsive to your question, that I think if you go back and review the transcript from that September 2nd hearing, which I believe is Exhibit K to our memorandum, the amount of interest in the details of that selective clearing plan was tepid at best, I would say, and I will just leave it at that. The transcript will show the amount of interest the planning board indicated in our clearing regime. But to answer your question, sir, Exhibit S, and I will go back and check the shading analysis for you as well. To answer the chair's question regarding the date of the application, I've gone back and found that, that is, that was October 16, 2019.
It was October. Yeah, 16, 2019.
And just to wrap up my question, so the way you left it with the planning board was it could have been anywhere from 0% clearing to 100% clearing of that buffer zone. Is that correct?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you finished?
Go ahead.
Okay. At no point were we suggesting 100% clearing. At no point were we suggesting
But you, I just want to be clear, you did not, in your report, give them a definitive amount of clearing that you were going to do in that buffer zone?
We did not identify an exact number of trees that would be cleared, to answer your question. We identified a number of high-level points about the clearing, and I will identify those for the record. We stated in the clearing plan that no trees would be cut from within the street right of way. We identified that selective clearing would take place to prevent shade on solar panels at that 2:1 height ratio. We stated that during any tree removal that was necessary, the understory trees and shrubs would be preserved to the extent practicable. And we also identified that after the tree removal was completed and the berm was constructed, the visibility of the panels from Maxon Hill Road would be reassessed in conjunction with the town, and the understory would be supplemented with additional evergreen plantings. And we also had proposed a periodic maintenance program to be performed to maintain the maximum tree heights. So those were the details that we provided. But again, I want to answer your question. We did not identify a precise number of trees that would be subject to topping or clearing.
Any questions?
Yep.
Mr. Nibou, Dan Harrington here. I have a question, again, piggybacking on the trees. So would it be, was it your intent then, or the intent of the applicant, to take down any tree that would not meet that 2:1 shade requirement on the solar panels?
Hang on one moment. I heard your question. So to answer your question, we were not planning on clearing the trees. To the extent the trees, again, this is an important point that I hadn't made before. If there were dead trees or otherwise damaged trees, we were planning on clearing them. And that's part of the condition that, you know, I don't think I touched upon much tonight, but the way this condition is phrased, we are not even allowed to take down dead, dying, or otherwise damaged trees under this condition. But, so those trees are planned under the selective clearing, we're going to be completely cleared. But our intent with respect to the 2:1 ratio was to rely mostly on tree topping and tree trimming to get the tree down under that 2:1 ratio to allow the panels on the outer bend to be maximum, maximum efficiency. So to answer your question, we were not planning on clearing every single tree, or really any of the live and well trees that exceeded the 2:1 ratio.
Just the mic clarification again. So a 2:1 ratio, if I had a 50-foot tall tree, how far would that extend from the solar panel?
So if you had a 60-foot tall tree, a panel, a panel outside, excuse me, within 120 feet of that tree would be infringed upon, for lack of a better word. So if, you know, we set out the footprint of the farm and look at the trees that come within the 2:1 ratio of the outer solar panel and would trim those trees to make sure that the outer solar panels were maximizing daylight.
So this is Chip Hale again. So did you present a plan in here for ensuring to keep those trees that you topped alive to maintain the vegetative barrier? The vegetative buffer? Because I hear what you're saying, that you weren't going to just cut them all down, you're going to take the tops off of them. And I think that, you know, the result of that is eventually you have a dead tree. So in that line, you're making it sound like it was okay, but I didn't actually see a place that you were going to ensure that those trees were kept in a vegetative state to maintain the vegetative buffer.
So first of all, and I'm pulling the decision right now so that I can give you the exact condition that I'm referring to, but there was a condition that required that we maintain the understory during the life of the project. So that's the visibility issue. We're preserving the understory, and obviously, there's a fence requirement. Screening-wise, we've ensured that. In terms of maintenance, in terms of maintenance, just bear with me a moment to find the answer is that there is a requirement that we maintain. So part of our shade analysis that we presented included a note that required ongoing maintenance of the trees that were not subject to the shade analysis. And what I want to do, and you'll have to bear with me, is find the condition here out of the 26 that touches upon the maintenance, because I assume that the next question will be, what's the legal requirement for you to do that, as opposed to a representation? So I'll need a moment to do that. I'm happy to answer another question while I'm reviewing this.
I just have one more question from Dan Harrington here. Do we know what kind of forests, are they conifers, are they deciduous? Are the trees 50-foot tall, 20-foot tall? Any idea what the vegetation is there right now?
Could you, I'm sorry, Mr. Harrington, could you just speak up a little bit? I had trouble with that question.
The vegetation is there right now in that 100-foot? Is it, are they 100-foot tall trees, are they 20-foot tall trees? Are they conifers, deciduous? What type of vegetation is there that we're talking about? What, how many impacts on the project?
I don't know the answer to that question. The vegetation that is there is extremely dense, the understory is extremely dense. I don't believe that an effort was undertaken to measure each tree. Well, actually, I should say, I know there wasn't an effort undertaken to measure each tree, and I could not tell you at this moment. And certainly, there's nothing in the record to support me saying what the range of tree heights are within that Maxon Hill 100-foot buffer.
So Mr. Nibou, so Chairman, you are, I just, I have a question. So Revity is trying to maximize the number of panels on the site for the maximum output, correct?
Absolutely. We're maximizing the amount of hours that the panels are exposed to the sun.
Okay, so when I read the evidence, if my recollection is correct, the planning board asked you to either move the panels to another spot. I don't recall if you couldn't, if you've already maximized all the area that you could possibly put it. But I believe, I remember Chairman DiOrio asking to possibly move the panels away from those taller trees to just eliminate the shading effect and protect the trees.
So there's a certain, the limiting factor on moving these projects around, as I understand it, is that the interconnection, in terms of aggregating the energy for interconnection purposes, the panels need to be within certain distance of the, they're not called circuit breakers, but think of them as, you know, transformers is the word I'm looking for. They need to be within a certain distance of the transformers, which are generally centralized, but they're also put at the outer bounds as well to get close to the So the site design of the panels is very dependent on where the transformers are placed. And where the transformers are placed is fairly dependent on the interconnection plan, which is really negotiated, and I use the word negotiated very loosely, with national grid. So we need to make sure that the panels are close enough to the transformers to be able to move the energy efficiently to the transformers. And the transformers need to be close enough to the interconnection grid to be able to efficiently connect into the larger, the larger grid. So I do believe that changing around the design of the farm was discussed. If I recall correctly, there was some level of revision done to the site plan where the panels were going to be. But at the end of the day, this, I mean, this is a large project, but there's only so much land that's out there. And so the panels, to hit nameplate capacity for this project of 11.3 megawatts, a certain number of panels, the ones we propose, have to be out there, and they have to go somewhere. And we tried to keep them off of the shade analysis point, but the ones that we couldn't get out, that's where they have to go. Could I just revert back to the question regarding maintenance real quick? Because I left that open-ended. Condition number 18 requires that the applicant maintain not only the solar farm for the life of the project, but also maintain the vegetated buffers for the life of the project. So for the legal requirement answer there, that's condition 18.
I don't think we have one in hand, because all of the, all the witnesses are in the virtual world, so the Unfortunately, we do not have a full-scale set of plans in front of us, because it's out in the virtual world, so we really can't get a good view other than a
Well, we can request
8x10. Yeah, we would like to have one for our review in hand.
We're happy to, we're happy to send a hard copy. Would it be appropriate to send it to the solicitor or directly to the town council?
I think you should probably send it right to the town or to the zoning board.
Send it to the zoning clerk.
Happy to do that.
Reading off an 8x10 sheet of paper is very hard for us to see exactly what's going on.
I'm just saying, for the 100-foot no-cut buffer, it would really talk 50 foot left, or what's? It is a 100-foot
I'm sorry, this is the court reporter again. I can't hear Mr. Harrington if we're on the record.
I was just asking what the 100-foot no-cut buffer, we know what that is, but what does that look like relative to the existing conditions there?
I mean, we also need to be just bear in mind of thinking of, you know, what we're supposed to be addressing, correct, to the planning board? And so that's where my question's coming from, where they, was the planning And so that's where my question is coming from, where they, was the planning board, what level of information was the planning board provided? We established that and I think you can see it. It's from my perspective that the planning board made a
So this is Chairman, that's
the, our review is just based upon those two criteria, whether or not the planning board
Guys, just, can we just
Yeah, this is the court reporter again. I mean, I can't hear the attorney sitting in the back corner. There's a lot of like kind of small chatter that's difficult to pick up in this, in this setting. So if we could all just speak into the microphones when we speak and I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and just please, please state your name. I know we can all see each other, but people in the virtual world don't know. The court reporter doesn't know who's speaking, so it's difficult for her.
So this is Chip Hale. I just mentioned that in considering, I just kind of reminded that we're just considering the planning board's decision. And so my line of questioning was just trying to determine the level of information that was provided to the planning board in order
Anybody else like to speak? So this is Chairman, you are again, Mr. Nibbo. So my initial question, when the the date of application in the beginning, so that was October 16, 2019. The town's PSES was adopted July 18, 2016, and then amended January 22, 2019. So everything after that amendment would fall under the amendment, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. So in chapter 246 of that, of the solar ordinance is about non-residential PSES. In that, it spells out that all, all solar developments in a non-residential zone, which this is, is in a manufacturing zone, will require a DPR, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. So then, when I, when I read the developmental plan review regulations, on page 11, item A, it talks about review. And it says, in reviewing the developmental plan, the planning board shall take into consideration public health, safety and general welfare, the comfort and convenience of the public in general, and of the residents of the immediate neighborhood in particular, and shall set any appropriate conditions and safeguards in harmony with the general purpose and intent of all local regulations and according to the general criteria and standards set forth herein. And then also within that section, it goes to go to item A, and then we go to item seven, so the A, subitem seven, the screening fences, walls, landscape areas, planting strips and other landscape and treatment that will enhance the buffer. Sorry, yes, I get going. I apologize, court reporter. And buffer the premises and ensure compatibility with surroundings uses. Acceptable vegetation is outlined in the Town of Poplin Land Development Subdivision Regulation Design Review Guidelines. And then number nine is mitigation of negative impacts as deemed necessary and appropriate in accordance with all federal, state and local regulations. And then if I move to item C, in the decision, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it says the planning board will approve, approve subject to modification, approve with conditions, or deny the developmental plan. And then it goes on. So my, I guess my question is, and you know, you're arguing that the planning board doesn't have the authority to make conditions on the site, yet there's 26 conditions. You're only arguing that they can't make two. But when I develop, when I read the solar ordinance, the PSES, and then also how it gets incorporated into the DPR, it talks about conditions in here, and then when I read both both ordinances, they ooze about maintaining and not cutting anything within the vegetative buffer. So I'm, I'm a little confused with your argument when it comes to how our ordinance is written. And I know you're throwing state law precedent from a state law that somehow was perceived during a town council meeting in another town, but I'm still very confused with arguing when our ordinance clearly states that they do have the ability to make conditions. And it looks like it's, and that has to do with the public safety and especially in the neighborhood, which is what it, which is what it calls out. And it appears that they did that. And I don't know that a neighbor has to testify that noise and these things. That's part of what our board does is the zoning board too, is we have to be the eyes, ears and voice of people. We've run into these things as well as the planning board. So they've run into a lot of these situations where this is a common occurrence. Most people are very concerned with the visual aspects of these solar fields. And also with the noise incorporated, if you're talking about a two year project, I don't know who else would stand up for the neighbors who are going to listen to all the noise and chatter of this project that's going to be going on for two years. That inhibits their use and enjoyment of their property. But again, I'm just going to defer it back to the, to the solar ordinance and then the DPR. It appears that it calls out that they do have the ability to make conditions. You're saying that I don't.
So my, my answer is this. And I'm going to take it from, from the top of, you know, the state law that, and this is statutory law, not, not case law, but that confers the authority on planning boards to do these reviews. Forty-five, Rhode Island General Laws, 45-24-49B says that a zoning ordinance may permit development plan review of applications that are permitted by right under the zoning ordinance, but that review shall only be based on specific and objective guidelines, which must be stated in the zoning ordinance. So what that says is that there are two types of DPR, two types of development plan review. There's one type of DPR where the applicant needs some relief, either a variance or a specially used permit to be able to go forward with the project. And then there's a second type of DPR where it's a by right use and there's no relief needed. We are the second here. We are a by right use, commercial manufacturing zone, solar is permitted. And in the second type of DPR, and the statute under Title 45 lays this out, it is largely an administrative review to make sure that the applicant has gone through all of the proper steps and proper notices and proper tests and whatnot to allow the project to go forward, but it is largely a pro forma administrative review. Now, that doesn't mean that conditions cannot be imposed, or imposed, I should say. Conditions that are based on specific objective criteria, either in the zoning, the solar ordinance itself, or the DPR regulations, and we were subject to conditions like this, and we're not here arguing about those. Conditions that are based on objective metrics can be imposed in that second type of DPR. Our argument is that the site work hours is predicated on a subdivision regulation that is, I cannot possibly imagine a more subjective test than for the general welfare. And what we are suggesting in our papers is that it is unlawful, it is a violation of 45-24-49, to impose a condition on a by right project that is based on a subjective test like for the general welfare. Now, to respond to your point about the noise of construction, we're not callous to that concern. But I suppose my answer would be this, we had six DPR meetings, and we do appreciate the planning board's time in those six meetings, and we appreciate the zoning board's time this evening, but we had six meetings. We were not required to give notice to a butters. We did, because we wanted to make sure that we took a belt and suspenders approach. There was not a public outcry of a butters about the noise that this construction would cause, and there's good reason that a butters spent their evenings differently than sitting in on the planning board meetings that night. Because we had presented objective evidence that even at the height of construction, you were not going to get a noise level that exceeded the 40 decibel limit that is in the town ordinances. This is not noisy site work. We are not building a mall here. This is fairly quiet site work. There's, there's some trucks that deliver the panels and the other infrastructure to the site. And then there's people that come on the project and install all of this. This is not, I mean, there's obviously the clearing that happens, that has to happen, and the tree topping, which is, which is noisy, but not above the 40 decibel level. There is evidence in the record that establishes that. So you know, from the legal perspective, there is not authority to allow the planning board to impose this hourly site restriction. There's nothing in the DPR regs that say there can be construction limitations. If that has happened in other projects, I can't speak to those projects. Perhaps they weren't by right projects, but I can't speak to them. This is a by right project, and the site hours cannot be limited under the subdivision regulation sections that the planning board has cited. And I would suggest that when the zoning board reviews the appellate record, that you're going to see that there's really no justification for hourly restrictions in this case, because the expert studies show that at no point should construction get above the 40 decibel level. I sincerely hope I came close to answering your question.
Oh, I mean, you were, you focused on the, the noise. Also, again, my, my observation of looking at the solar ordinance and the DPR, again, there's, there's so many areas in there where they're talking about maintaining and not clearing at all anything within the vegetative buffer. And again, I'm trying to be objective here, and that when I read, when I read the ordinances, that's what it says. The legality of them, you can argue that with someone else, but that's what I see written here, and that's what the planning board was going off of concerning the vegetated buffering. It also falls into our zoning ordinances where there's setback requirements, and I think you touched on them in your opening, where when we get into our dimensional area, we have, there's footnotes one and two that talk about maintaining those. The solar ordinance says explicitly, there's no cutting whatsoever in that setback area. And then again, numerous areas throughout it keep talking about the visual impacts, no clearing, and then adding fencing, and then adding subvegetation, just totally minimize the visual impacts. So I, I'm a little confused as to as to where you're coming from, saying that the town doesn't have a leg to stand on clearing the vegetation because you just want a tree top. And I understand that this is, this is a profit venture, and you want to maximize where the panels go. But the, the planning board's reading an ordinance, two, you know, two layers of it that say that you can't do any of this whatsoever, and it looked like from the testimony received, that was kind of beat around throughout months and months of testimony and brought up over and over and over again, and even with, with your, your vegetative I don't know what report that you put in, the shading report, you still weren't very clear on the specific trees that you wanted to do this with, that you didn't want to do it with. It was kind of a generalization so we could maximize the profit where the panels go. But I think the, the planning board and the, and the neighbors through the planning board are concerned about what trees are maintaining that rural character that we have in town, not nubbing everything down to a eight foot odd dividing so that it looks like the side of a, a baseball field or something. I mean, I, I think that, I think that's where they were coming from. But again, I'm just, I'm very confused because both, both parts of that, that ordinance, the DPR, the solar ordinance, again, it's just all over the place is talking about maintaining the buffering and not allowing cut.
So I think that a distinction needs to be drawn, because it is drawn in the solar ordinance, between prohibiting all clearing and maintaining a vegetated buffer. Those are two different things. Maintaining a vegetated buffer does not mean that there cannot be selective clearing. It means that the vegetation, and again, vegetation is not just trees. Vegetation is bushes, it's understory, it's grass, it's even perhaps earth and berm. Vegetation is, is a mix of different things, and we presented a plan from a registered arborist and landscape architect that set forth a screening regime that he, in his experience, John Carter, felt would give the butters that there are, and there are very few butters, by the way, would give the butters that there are an adequate screening from the solar panels. We had an environmental engineer who came and spoke to the fact that the plan as we presented it would not present an undue harm to the environment by doing selective clearing. We had our noise expert. At some level, to impose a condition, the planning board needs to hear countervailing evidence about there being harms. We presented evidence of no harms. Nobody came forth and said, wait, that evidence is incorrect. There are going to be view issues with what's been presented. There are going to be environmental concerns with what's been presented. There's been, there was no testimony like that. So to impose a condition, the burden is frankly on the planning board to justify the need for a condition with a by right project. We are maintaining the vegetated condition in this 100 foot setback. We are not clear cutting. We have not presented the planning board with a clear cutting regime. The question for the zoning board here is whether the solar ordinance allows the planning board to say that not a single piece of vegetation will be touched within that 100 foot setback. And my reading of this ordinance, and what I'm looking at is section C1, which we say applies when you need a variance, and note two, which we say, I believe, applies where you are by right. Section C1 says no clearing. That is when you need relief. Note two says you have to maintain a vegetated condition. That is when you are by right. Our selective clearing regime is certainly going to maintain the vegetated condition, and in fact, we are going to supplement the vegetated condition. Note two is the standard that we should, we should have been held to, and that does not suggest that we should be completely prohibited from clearing in the setback, and that's why we're here on appeal.
Tony Spazato here. I got a question on the hours. What hours were you looking for that are different than the eight to five?
Well, you know, frankly, there's, there's no justification for any hourly restriction. I will say we have been, I believe, and I can stand to be corrected, I believe it was in West Warwick within the last month or so, similar, a solar project, where we were placed on, if I recall correctly, seven to seven work week and maybe a nine to four regime on the weekends, giving some sort of limitation. But the fact of the matter is, is that I don't think there's going to be construction happening when there's no, when the sun lights out. I don't think that's, I don't think we could find subcontractors, nor would we want to, that are going to be going out there with this fairly delicate electronics and trying to put them together when there's no sun. So that's just a practical limitation. You know, my, my argument in the papers, the legal argument, is that there's no authority to set construction hour, site work limitations. I understand your desire to find some sort of middle ground, and I appreciate that desire. I cite, you know, our experience with West Warwick as an example of something that sets some sort of limitations, but really allows us to work whenever there's daylight. So, so something like that has been done in the past, but just purely from the legal argument perspective, I don't think there's authority to set any site work hours.
So with that being said, the noisiest part of your project is going to be the very beginning. When they're actually, construction, when they're actually constructing the panel portion, which all your clearing and stumping is going to be done at that point.
That's correct, and I would
Relatively quiet at that point.
That's correct. It's people installing, moving, moving about and installing panels into the braces and building the metal. It is a very complicated and large IKEA project. And I'm being, and I'm being facetious. It, it's much more than that, but that is what they're doing on the, on the site. And I, and I, I'd be remiss if I didn't note at this point that this project involves no blasting. And, and, and I would also add
That in itself doesn't make sense, but that's okay.
I'm sorry?
That in itself doesn't make sense as part of the ordinance, but that's my opinion.
Um, and, and I also, I, I've been reminded that the entrance to the site is far away from the neighbors as well. If you look at the plan, I know you guys are looking at an eight by 10 right now, so it's probably very difficult. But when you get a chance, when we send you the large plan, I'd note that the access road is far from any residential uh butters. And again, there are very few of them.
Any other questions? Not at this time. All right, we'll, we'll reserve the right to swing back around to you, Mr. Nibou.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
I will go on mute now.
Yeah, yes, can you, when, if you give us a large set of uh plans, can you throw us five copies?
Five copies.
Please.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Attorney Hogan, are you still there?
I am.
All right, you didn't fall asleep on us, good.
I did not.
All right, so um
You ready to proceed?
Yes. So if you, if you could state, if you could state your full name for the stenographer and
Of course.
Your position so she can get it on the record.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of review of Hopkinton. My name is Margaret Hogan and I am serving as the Hopkinton Planning Solicitor since the beginning of this year. Uh, the matter before the zoning board of review is an appeal from the planning board, which is governed by state law forty-five twenty-four seventy. And you've, you've already heard this in the, both in the plate papers and also um in the prior argument. Uh, this is governed by uh state law that says that a planning board, pardon me, zoning board shall not reverse a decision of the planning board except a prejudicial procedural error, clear error, or lack of supportive weight of evidence in the record. Now, this evening, my brother has not made any arguments as to that third item, the lack of support of weight of evidence in the record. And he suggested to the board that they were not claiming prejudicial procedural error. Quite honestly, having read their papers, I certainly felt they were. And I've addressed that in our papers, both the initial uh memorandum and the supplemental memorandum. But, so I'm going to be addressing that this evening as well. So despite the voluminous papers filed in the case, the fact pattern is not complicated. They argue that the planning board's imposition of two conditions of approval must be reversed and allege that the board committed both clear error and prejudicial procedural error. And of order to evaluate this claim, the zoning board must know the parameters by which the application was judged by the planning board. The planning board's review of the proposed uh solar array was governed not only by the planning board's land development regulations, but also by the terms of the PSES ordinance, as well as the zoning ordinance, including the use table, a table of dimensional regulations set forth therein, and more, most importantly, the development plan review component of the ordinance, which was adopted nearly seven years ago today, uh on July twenty-one, two thousand and fourteen. That ordinance is incorporated into your zoning ordinance as chapter thirteen point five, article three, sections thirteen, five, seventy through seventy-six. And the chairman this evening has um, has referred to those and sort of preempted some of my argument, but I'm going to go through it anyway. So referring to that particular ordinance, um, it provides direction to the planning board on the issues that it shall take into consideration, not might want to, not may, but shall. And that includes the public health, safety, general welfare, comfort, and convenience of the surrounding uh properties of the residents of the immediate neighborhood in particular, and directs the planning commission to set any appropriate conditions and safeguards in harmony with the general purpose and intent of all local regulations and according to the criteria and standards set forth herein. And then it goes on to talk about some of the improvements that the planning board may approve as conditions include, but are not limited to the following. And there are nine things that are enumerated here. We've highlighted for you uh in, in our papers and the chair has quoted from that or referenced that. Number seven talks about screening fences, walls, landscaped areas, planting strips, and other landscaping treatment that will enhance and buffer the premises and ensure compatibility with the surrounding uses. Then it goes on to talk about acceptable vegetation is outlined in the Town of Hopkinton Land Development and Subdivision Regulations Design Review Guidelines. Uh, in addition, uh, number nine directs the planning board that it may approve conditions to mitigate negative impacts as deemed necessary and appropriate in accordance with all federal, state, and local regulations. Now pursuant to that authority and pursuant to the, the PSES and the rest of the zoning ordinance, as well as the planning board's regulations, the planning board included those two restrictions that uh my brother has been speaking about earlier tonight. A work time restriction of Monday through Friday from eight to five, which we submit is authorized by subsection nine of section thirteen point five dash seventy-six A. Uh, and uh a restriction that the existing vegetation in the setback remain and then it then be supplemented by evergreen trees, we believe and submit to you that that's authorized by subsection seven of the section thirteen point five dash seventy-six. The appellants argue that the work time restriction is not, simply not authorized um by the zoning ordinance or the PSES ordinance. And while it is true that the specific time limitation is not set forth in the DPR ordinance, it is clearly authorized by section nine, which authorizes the planning board to mitigate negative impacts as deemed necessary and appropriate. Now, in this case, the planning board recognized that the two-year construction period authorized under the ordinance is a very, very long time and determined that abutting residential neighbors needed respite from unrestrained construction hours. And the time restriction chosen was the same as to which all other, or not all, but some other utility scale solar projects have been subjected. The appellants claim that, that because their proposed use is a permitted use under the zoning table of uses, that it is by right and that their interpretation of by right means that the planning board did not have authority to impose conditions. This is simply not the case, as the planning board is clearly authorized by the development plan review ordinance to mitigate negative impacts. Uh, the coinciding with the time restriction argument, we interpreted the pleadings to mean that there was a prejudicial procedural error. And my brother harped on that again to, tonight, saying that it was only introduced at the penultimate meeting of the planning board. Well, the facts are that that's not the case. Uh, the issue was brought up for the first time by Joseph Moreau, a member of the public, at the July twenty-twenty meeting. Then, at the September second, I believe it was, meeting of twenty-twenty, um, planning board member Carolyn Light brought it up again and inquired as to whether or not the rest of the planning board would, would deem it appropriate to place hourly restrictions on the construction. Because under the PSES ordinance, the applicant or the uh successful developer would have up to a two-year period in which to um construct this um solar array. Now, it is July twenty-twenty-one right now and COVID started, seems like years ago, but it was only sixteen months. So the neighboring property owners to this particular development would have to have survived, had it been under construction, all these past sixteen months and still have eight more to go, all without any relief. In the question that the board member asked, and I didn't have the video on, so I wasn't sure which one of you asked the question of my brother just a few moments before I began speaking, you asked what type of restrictions did they have in mind? And um respectfully, um, there was hemming and hawing and a reference to a, another town and perhaps a nine to four on the weekends. I would suggest to the zoning board of review that the planning board's uh implementation of the relief from that type of activity on weekends um is in fact authorized and necessary to protect the immediate neighborhood and to, and to make sure that they are protected from twenty-four, seven, if you will, noise. Now, my brother suggested that, well, they wouldn't be out there in the dark. May it not be, but the sun comes up at five in the summer and do we really want uh the trees to be, being caught at five o'clock in the morning? The planning board thought no and felt it was appropriate to limit this particular applicant to the same set of standards and restrictions that other solar arrays have in fact been um subjected to. Um, there was discussion at the September twenty-twenty meeting when the applicant's attorney alleged that the board didn't have jurisdiction uh to an authority to impose that restriction. And the planning board chair turned to the solicitor at the time and asked whether that was pop, whether they had the authority. He said initially he didn't think so, but that he would have to get back to them. Chairman said, well, we're going to include this as a tentative condition of approval and then you find out and you let us know. And so if the planning board's solicitor had come back and said you can't include it, I, I doubt that the planning board would have reluctantly. Uh, and however, the planning board's attorney uh and the town solicitor had communications, email communications, and possibly verbal communications, although I don't know because I wasn't here at the time, certainly had email communications on this subject matter. And the um planning, pardon me, the applicant has suggested in its papers that all of its protestations were simply ignored. And I would suggest to the zoning board, they were not ignored, they just weren't agreed with. The town solicitor and the planning solicitor came to the determination that this was a permissible condition uh and that the board was going to be able to proceed with that. So that's in September, there has back and forth. And so the matter was not finally decided by the planning board until the October meeting. Um, and at the October meeting, the appellant's attorney was allowed time to argue this matter. She did and she did not, but she did not address the several claims that have been raised after the conclusion of the planning board readings and which were argued again tonight. And that pertains to interconnection issues with national grid, tax and equity issues, uh et cetera, financing that, that, that they can't get financing if it goes on, if they don't, if it goes on beyond the two years, et cetera. So all of those arguments, they've all been made after the fact, after the board made its decision. There was also an argument in the, in the applicant's uh papers that said, well, it wasn't fair. We weren't given a chance and we were summarily dismissed by Mr. Diorio at the October meeting. If you look at the minutes, it's simply not the case. Counsel for applicant was allowed to present. She did not raise these issues. She simply did not. So she has waived her right to argue the impacts of the work time restrictions because the board never heard those arguments. She could have, after the September meeting, submitted um a, a document or, or a petition, a motion to the board to say, we'd like to have the opportunity at the October meeting, instead of having you decide this case, we'd like the opportunity to present to you evidence in regards to the impacts that we believe we're going to suffer from these work time restrictions. She did not do so, nor did she do so at the commencement of the October meeting when she had the floor. She just reiterated the same uh arguments that had not been persuasive to the town solicitor and the assistant town solicitor that the board didn't have the legal authority. That's where their argument was limited to. So the fact that that's being raised now, when the board hasn't even heard it, it's inappropriate and it should not be even considered by the zoning board of review. What she said was, our opinion, the planning board does not have the authority to further restrict construction or site work activities in any way. Then she went on to say, respectfully, we ask if this condition is going to be approved, a six-month extension should be given on the two-year Hopkinton Planning Board meeting deadline for construction in the DPR ordinance. Then she said, I would, I also see that Ralph Palumbo would like to comment, and there's a question mark at the end of that. And Ralph Palumbo was the applicant or uh associated with the applicant. And at that point, that's when Mr. Diorio said, we're all done, we've, we've heard it, et cetera. That was her opportunity prior to asking if Mr. Palumbo would like to comment. She had the opportunity to talk about how this is going to impact their interconnection agreements, how it's going to affect their financing, tax implications, et cetera. She did not do so. So at the end of her presentation, the chair committed no prejudicial procedural error when closing the hearing and finally calling for a vote. Especially when the planning board was never alerted that there might be, according to the applicant, adverse impacts to this condition. So based on the board, I think it was the chair tonight asking my brother about the timing, the answer basically is, well, we're at the mercy of the developer. If we feel like we're not going to do construction uh at, on this Saturday or this holiday, then maybe we won't, but maybe we will. And the board didn't find that that was an appropriate appropriate way for this development to be uh constructed, particularly over a two-year period. Moving on to the vegetated buffer condition, uh as set forth in our pleadings, the chairman stated from the very beginning at pre-op in October two thousand and nineteen that vegetation was going and screening and buffering was going to be a very significant issue and that he would be looking for mature vegetation to screen the array from the residential properties. So along the way, and I've highlighted in my initial memo to you, but some brief summaries, very brief summaries of, of the kind of testimony that was at each of these hearings. And as the, as the project proceeded, it, it actually increased the number of acres that, of trees that it was going to cut from the initial pre-application. Uh, board member Shumshimia is uh quoted and is in the uh, the minutes that I've attached to our initial filing as being very concerned with this and very disappointed that that was going the wrong way. In the papers, the applicant, and this evening as well, have argued that, look, this was a, this was a cooperative process. We worked with the planning board. We felt as though we were reaching agreement on these vegetated issues. We felt like we would be able to do certain things and that the board basically pulled the rug out from underneath them at the last minute. It's clearly not the case. All you have to do is to look at the minutes, you'll see that the board members expressed dissatisfaction with the landscape plan consistently. It's been suggested that Crossman Engineering, who was the town's consulting engineer, had come to an agreement, if you will, with the applicant in the field in August of twenty-twenty. I would suggest to you, that's simply not the case. And while he may have agreed with the um, some of the approaches that they were discussing in the field, he also had significant reservations. And he also understood that at the end of the day, this is not something that the consulting engineer agrees to. This is something that the planning board has to agree to. Um, and if you will look at, uh, give me just a moment here, I believe it's exhibit nine in your binder that I provided to you. Page two. This is Mr. Cross, uh, Mr. Crossman, so I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral's comments. I believe it's, no, pardon me, uh, the landscape architect and Doug Allen P E submitted a memorandum. I believe it's, no, pardon me, the landscape architect and Doug Allen P E submitted a memorandum. And it says, under comments, a primary unknown is that since the height of the existing trees along the buffer. Front yard setback were not identified on the cross section. The extent of tree cutting within the selected clearing areas front yard is not known. The PSES requirement, section C one, paragraph two, page six, was debated at the most recent planning board hearing. And we understand that the town solicitor indicates that this section prohibits any clearing within the front, rear and side yard setbacks. Unless explicitly approved by the planning board. Therefore, a more exact removal proposal is needed for the board's understanding of the proposal. No more exact. Tree removal proposal was suggested thereafter. I'd now like to turn to the language contained in the PSES ordinance that is applicable, the one that was adopted in January two thousand and nineteen. And I find the appellate's arguments i- in this regard. Self-serving. The language is clear and unequivocal. What it states in the second paragraph is. Clearing of any existing vegetation within the front, rear and side yard setback areas is prohibited. Unless explicitly approved by the planning board. That's right there in the PSES. What they're arguing is that, well, that's the second sentence in that paragraph and the first sentence. Talks about rezoning from RFR eighty to commercial and manufacturing. And so therefore, this whole paragraph is limited to those types of solar arrays. And not ones that are permitted as a by right. That's nonsensical. It really makes no sense at all. When you go into the third sentence of that paragraph, what it says is the PSES and equipment shall not have a significant adverse impact. Upon the soils, water resources, air quality, or other natural resources of the land or surrounding area. By my brother's calculation, that last sentence that I just read applies only to. The when there's a rezoning of a parcel from residential to commercial or manufacturing for a PSES. That's absurd. The town did not enact a regulation that says only one type of PSES and the equipment. Shall not have a significant adverse impact on the soils, water resources, air quality, or other natural resources of the land or surrounding areas. It's it's simply absurd to suggest that that is the appropriate interpretation of this paragraph. Of the PSES design guidelines. It's simply absurd and it's also, he also argues that the. Restriction set forth in the table of dimensional regulations. Which limits the clearing in the one hundred foot setback is only applicable to certain types of PSES once again. So we're making up rules to fit what we want them to be, not what they clearly are. We would suggest to this. Zoning Board of Review that the planning board. Carefully. Considered this application. Gave it extensive review. Heard the evidence, listened to the testimony. And determined that two particular conditions were needed to protect. The health, safety, welfare of the of the residents of the town. And they've imposed those restrictions. There has been no showing of prejudicial procedural error, there has been no showing of clear error. Because these restrictions are permitted specifically by the development plan review ordinance. As such, we would ask the zoning board of review to deny and dismiss the appellate's claim. And affirm the decision of the planning board. Thank you.
I'm good. I would like to ask the court reporter, how are you holding up? Do you need a break?
And no, no, I'm doing fine, thank you.
We're happy to give you a break, if I know your fingers are going a mile a minute.
That's okay, that's okay.
I tried to go slowly for you.
No, Maggie, you you're great, thank you.
I'm bored of having any endless questions for Attorney Hogan. So this is Chairman you, Attorney Hogan, so. Back, you made mention and that, you know, in reviewing all the documents, we got that the the planning board attorney of. Had to check to see if the planning board had the authority to put restrictions on or. Restrictions on this this project. When he came back, do any of us know how he determined that they do have the right to do that?
I personally do not have knowledge of that, except for the fact that I know he consulted with the town solicitor. Who determined fairly readily that the town indeed had that determination.
Okay, sorry, so you consulted with the town's attorney.
That's correct.
I was wondering, you know, if there's more detail as to how he came to that conclusion. And then if we look at the the DPR, I think it was under, I don't know if it's on the C one, but we were talking about the public. Health, safety, general welfare, comfort and convenience. Could I take a little deeper dive into each of those so that anybody listening or for the record that we have a little clarity on what each of those mean? So if we were to look at the public health, what would what would you consider the public health? So you know, some of the issues that the the planning board would consider.
I'm certain that the planning board would consider the impact to mental health. You know, whether they did not, and let me be very clear, they did not express that in their decision-making process, okay? And so. There there's no, there's no indication in the record that that's what went through their minds necessarily, but I'm certain that it did. How could you not? They talked about the 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 need for the eight to five and that it was appropriate for. Them to impose that for the benefit of those residential abutting property owners. And to be consistent with the same type of restriction that had been imposed upon other solar arrays in the town. So certainly from my from my perspective, you know, if I'm if I'm advising the planning board, I'm going to say to them, yes, you can, you can consider. The impact to the health of the residents, their their perception of what this, you know. The bothersomeness, if you will, to them of consistent traffic at seven in the morning till eight at night in the summer or whatever it might be. I would absolutely advise them that they could take that under consideration.
Okay, so I so I guess where my question's leading is is we deal with this on the zoning side a lot, I'm sure the plan does, is. With trying to be specific on ordinances, relations and condition. It's run, I mean, I I've been doing this for a while and I have two other board members that have been on here longer than I and we run into this. Where how specific does ordinance or even the have to be because. Run into some, I don't even want to call it gray area, but where you run in, you cannot be so specific with something because you'll always miss something. So so the comments of public health, that could mean a lot of things, it could be mental health, it could be physical health. Safety, that could that could be fire, it could be police, it could be physical. General welfare, that could encompass those first two and just. A lot of different, it covers a lot of different topics. But to only each one of those and be so specific as to have to call out that, you know. The town reserves the right to put specific limits on the time of operation. There's not enough paper in the world to write all these specificities down, if I can say that right.
That's correct, yep.
Right.
So. So. So what I would say to you is that when you look to section A under review. It it gives the planning board a guideline saying, all right, listen, you can take all of these factors into consideration. And you may approve conditions that are limited, that are not limited to, but include the following, okay? And they and they highlight nine categories of conditions. There's no possible way that a zoning ordinance would have every permutation of every condition. For every use that's set forth by right in the in any town, it's just not done. So. These are the categories and so there needs to be evidence that these restrictions or or conditions, if you will, are necessary.
Okay, so that so that would, I mean, the reason why they have that in there and why we have a board or the planning board or the Board of Appeals, so now you have multiple eyes looking at these different.
Sure.
To to put their objective opinions in based on testimony and and fact and evidence, correct?
Yes.
Is it uncommon for. A board or even the town council to make a decision without getting any testimony from the butter?
As to as to the impact, you mean?
Yeah.
I would say it's not uncommon and it's also not disallowed because the planning board knows. By its. Handling of these matters, what the issues are and what they're what they need to do in order to protect the surrounding properties. The planning department gets complaint after complaint after complaint about other PSESs that have already gone into operation. There's problems with runoff, there's problems with traffic, there's problems with the construction, et cetera, whatever it may be. The visual impact, the fear of some people that these things have electromagnetic currents and impacts. And so all of those complaints come in. And so the planning department and the planning board is aware of those when they hear these applications. And this wasn't their first rodeo, so they know the kinds of restrictions that are necessary to protect the public's interest.
So I think you just answered my next question, which is that our planning board are our planning experts for the town, correct, including our town planner?
Yes.
Right, so they are privy to information from past projects and all of this other input as you just elaborated on. So if a neighbor doesn't raise a concern, it doesn't mean that those concerns are not there because the community has already. Expressed those during other events, correct?
Generally speaking, yes, that is true. And I think the other thing that we all have to keep in mind. And whether whether that's true for this particular application or not remains to be seen because we don't know, but bottom line is. Participating in these meetings via Skype or audio or what have you is extremely challenging. Even for those of us who have been doing it for for sixteen months in in this review. Were there people who didn't show up because they couldn't manage the technology? I don't know, possibly. So the planning board sits to protect as a general board, the town and its residents from. Negative impacts and they have the authority to mitigate those negative impacts.
Okay. Board member, he would like to make a comment.
Yeah, so this is Chip Dylan, I just want to. Just to follow up on Chairman. So under these conditions and in consideration of the health and well-being of the community, does the planning board have. The power to consider the cumulative impacts of other significant projects to that area? So I'm specifically referring to the fact that there was another large solar installation that's currently being built. In that area and so is it within their, can they, are they allowed to take? That into consideration, say, okay, the people living in this neighborhood have already been bombarded by one construction project. We think it would be. Fair and reasonable to, you know, try to diminish further impact on them, on their social or psychological. And emotional health, is that within the.
I I would say that's appropriate for them to consider, however, I don't, I would not agree that the planning board could limit. Punish, if you will, one applicant because of another, and that would not be fair to this applicant. And I would, if I were advising the board at the time, I would, I would not advise them to necessarily punish, if you will. Or say, look, this is a cumulative impact from another thing because the the applicant can't control that. And they come to it with a piece of property that they own or they have control over and they're submitting their application. And they should be held to certain standards that are set forth in the regulations and the zoning ordinance, which they were by the planning board.
So so fortunately, that question, I don't, I didn't remember seeing any testimony. In that direction or the other, there's there's no, there's nothing on the record stating that either way, so it's hard to. Show that was a consideration, but we we know that the planning board sees all the other projects and is aware of what's going on. There was nothing on the record saying that they were taking in the cumulative effect of something in that neighborhood.
No, they, no, they did not state that.
Okay, I didn't read any, I'm just making that clear on the record.
Yes, no, and I don't, and I'm not suggesting that that would be appropriate, again, like I said, the cumulative impact that would be punishing us. You know, an applicant that comes to the party late and that's not fair and we're not suggesting that. But I would suggest is that Ms. Ms. Light, as the planning board member. Highlighted this and and knew that this was an issue that the the board needed to address. And it was, it was raised by, as I indicated, a member of the public at the July fifteenth meeting. Kind of ironic that's exactly a year later and that was then again raised by Ms. Light in the September second meeting.
Any other, any other questions? I would also just, I just the, just the backtrack right to the beginning of the meeting, I'd like to thank all parties. For the patience in getting to this point because it took all sides, I mean, it wasn't one or the other, but everybody had conflicts. Whether it was the county, the appealing, this board. There was weather, weather or COVID, it's taken a long time to get here. And I think we've all been very patient with each other trying to get to this point, so I just want to put that on the record. That we've all, we've all had issues from from all directions trying to get here and thank everybody. Kind of hanging in there. Do we have any? Party in the public as a hand up or anything?
Well, the other attorney has to have a little bubble.
Okay, that's true, I'm sorry. Attorney Knight, who, do you have anything?
Mr. Chair, I I will be ever so brief, I see what time it is and I appreciate the coming up on two hours now, I just have three points to make and I'll make them quickly. The first point I wanted to make. You know, the planning board has suggested that with respect to the prejudice. That we are going to suffer from having our construction delayed. That we are putting things in the record that wasn't mentioned during the planning board meetings regarding interconnection and financing. We heard a lot tonight about public health concerns, mental health concerns, fear of electromagnetics, fear of how many projects were in the. None of that was put in the record. At the planning board hearing, there was not a single a butter who showed up to testify that they were afraid of electromagnetic currents coming off the solar panels. And frankly, we as the applicant have a right to have that evidence presented to us. So that we can come forth with our experts to assuage those concerns. With all due respect to Attorney Hogan, she she is guessing as to what the planning board may have been thinking. About what a butters may be scared of with respect to solar. That is just so far beyond the legal standard for planning board hearings. And the legal standard for the applicant's due process rights to address legitimate concerns about the development. We we cannot be facing the public health decision on things that Attorney Hogan thinks the public, the planning board may have been concerned about. A butter's being concerned about. So that's one. Two, Chairman, you had asked about the reversal of opinion by the planning board. Counsel and and where that where that came from, that is just for your reference, Chair, that is exhibit L. To our notice of appeal. That is exhibit L to our, uh, notice of appeal. It is an email exchange between uh, Ms. Hogan's predecessor, uh, Mr. McAllister, uh, and his associate, Mr. Klow, uh, and, uh, Ms. Browning and her associate. Uh, and, and in that email exchange, uh, Mr. McAllister, uh, articulates, uh, the new legal position regarding site work as, as such. Hi Karen, and the date on this, by the way, is September twenty nine, twenty twenty. This email came, uh, nine days before the final hearing. As, quote, as I discussed with you this morning, it is the legal position of the town of Hockington that the planning board has the authority to restrict the hours of construction of solar projects to include restricting construction between the hours of eight AM and five PM weekdays with no construction work allowed on weekends. This restriction has been imposed on the vast majority of solar projects and other construction projects for years. And that is common knowledge within the town. So there's no legal standard cited in this email. You can check that, uh, yourselves. Whether the restriction had been imposed on solar projects in the past, I, I don't know. Or, or other construction projects, I don't know. It is clearly trying to apply an unwritten uh, practice, uh, where there is no actual legal authority and that, and that we've cited case law, that's not allowed. I would suggest that it is perhaps the case that other solar projects referenced and other construction projects were not by right projects like this project is. And as we've articulated, the planning board has a lot more authority when the applicant is coming forth asking for permission to, uh, develop in the way proposed as opposed to here where their right to develop is set forth, uh, in the ordinance. Um, the last point I want to make is that we went back and forth with the planning board on any number of items. Uh, Attorney Hogan, uh, referenced the fact that, you know, out, out of that back and forth, two conditions arose. There were twenty six conditions. We're here on two of them. Uh, the back and forth, uh, is reflected in the transcript. Attorney Hogan has referenced the minutes. I, I would strongly commend the board to look at the transcripts of what occurred during these, uh, and, and I know it's all much longer than the minutes, but they do reflect what actually happened. Even though there was a great deal of back and forth between the planning board and the applicant, at no point, and this is still the case, has the coverage on the property exceeded fifty seven percent coverage. Now, the solar ordinance allows us to go up to seventy five. In good faith, working with the planning board, we had not ever gone above fifty seven percent coverage. And the last point I would make on this, uh, back and forth is that the second portion of condition five requires the applicant to supplement the vegetated condition in the setback. There is no legal requirement that we supplement. That condition arose from the applicant offering to provide additional support for the setback. To provide earth and, um, berm and additional understory and fencing and other, uh, shrubs. Because we understood that with the selective clearing regime, we should do a little extra to make sure that the eye line screening is protected. Um, so, so that second piece of condition five is exhibit A of the efforts that the applicant made to go above and beyond what's required to make this project workable for the very limited number of abutters that, uh, are hypothetically impacted by this project. Um, so unless there are any other questions, I, I again appreciate your time and I want to echo the chair's, uh, uh, point about, um, this being a long process and us working together to get here. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just one particular comment I'd like to make.
Okay, Attorney Holden.
Thank you so much. Um, and my brother just referenced it and that was the very limited number of abutting property owners. From our perspective, the, if it were just one abutting property owner, the planning board has an obligation to protect those uh, property owners from adverse impacts and impose conditions that mitigate those adverse impacts. The fact that there might be one, two, five, 10 or 100 abutters is not relevant. Thank you.
Word's still good? Okay, um, I think we have a hand up. Public.
Just want to remind that whoever's going to speak.
Hi, this is Joel Moreau. I live on Old Depot Road. How's everyone doing tonight?
Mr. Moreau, uh, welcome. So could I just?
Thank you.
Could I just take a second to point out, um, we have to stick to the evidence that was already been presented. Um, and the testimony that's been presented during the, uh, the, the planning hearings. We're not going to take any new evidence or new, new comments outside of that.
Okay, I, I understand.
All right.
I just wanted to, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that Attorney Hogan is correct. Uh, I've raised the point about the work schedule of eight to five and no weekends. Uh, Mr. Palumbo said at one of these meetings that they had to work on a Saturday. Uh, I've also raised the same point for other projects, uh, for workshops in the PSES. The buffering, as the chair and the planning board members discussed tonight, I've listened to all of these meetings. The buffering was a major concern. Um, the discussion tonight with one attorney and a discussion during these meetings is quite a bit different in, in my opinion. Uh, no one has mentioned about the visual slope of this site as you come up Frontier Road. Uh, one of the concerns that I would have would be the glare, uh, and if they decide to, uh, decrease the buffering.
Can I cuff you up for a second? Um, was that in the initial testimony, um, received through the planning board?
About the visual sight?
About the sloping and about the glare and stuff. Um, I'm not sure if that was in the testimony or not. Um, I would have to defer to the attorneys on it. I, I don't recall that, but we, we can't, we, we can't ask new questions. Okay. They weren't discussed or on the record. Okay? We have to stick to the past record from what the planning board, um, was presented. Um, so if those questions weren't there, they're not, it's not appropriate to ask them at this. We, we have to base everything on this testimony that's already been received and the evidence received, um, not to add additional questions and comments and, and.
Right. That definitely was a discussion about the physical layout of the site and the impact it would have on residents, uh, in that neighborhood and driving, uh, driving up that road. That was a discussion. The other point I want to make, and I, I think the chair tonight had mentioned this point, uh, with this project and other projects. Just because people do not call in, did not call into the planning board meeting for this particular project. Uh, I know residents are vehemently calling our planning department. They're calling the boards and chair and have called the town council on this project. So it's not just a question of the, um, of hearing this or not hearing from, uh, abutters. And this question came up also during these discussions, uh, with the well and the restaurant on this location and people playing miniature golf. And if they're working on Saturdays, that was part of this discussion. Uh, some of the other points I'm not going to bring up because, uh, I will adhere to what you said, but, uh, it definitely was raised by myself, Carolyn Light, uh, about this work schedule and the buffering was clearly discussed many, many, many times. Um, but that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks again for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much for, for attending and, and, uh, appreciate that. Board, any more discussion? Anybody else out there? Attorney Nibo or Hogan, anything else for this evening?
Uh, this is Nick, this is Nick Nibo. I'm all, I'm all set for the applicant. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm all set for the planning board as well. Thank you very much for your attention this evening.
Okay, thank you. So, um, before we move on, I would like to, uh, I, I don't think the board is ready to make a decision this evening. I think we want to take a look at the transcripts and review everything and come back, um, next month. If we could all wrap our heads around when we can meet again next and during August, I think that puts us out, like our regular meeting would be maybe the fifteen, eight, nine, eight nineteen. Somebody's strong, eight nineteen. Uh, how does everybody's schedule look on eight nineteen? Any reservations from the board?
Mr. Chairman. So this is Attorney Hogan. And so I actually had, um, this conversation, I believe, with, with the folks in connection with this scheduling. I, I am unavailable, uh, the bulk of August. Uh, I am available the last week, the twenty third through the twenty seventh. But prior in time, I am not available. I apologize.
Okay. So if we push that out to the fourth week, um, all right, uh, one of our board members has a conflict that week. So that would push us into September then. Our regular meeting in September would be the sixteenth. Of the board on the sixth. Attorney Hogan, how's that look?
I, I'm clear for that night, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Nibo?
That's fine for the applicant. Thank you. Nine sixteen.
Attorney, he's, he's good. Okay. So let's, let's set that, um, for nine sixteen, seven PM. Okay, um. I entertain a motion from the board to continue the meeting to that date, nine sixteen, uh, two thousand twenty one. So move. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Oh, yeah, I'm so. No, we can't, we cannot close. We're just going to continue this. So. Now, we have, um, so we have some minutes from, um, the board of appeals that we need to approve. Does anybody have those in here? What evening they were, maybe.
Um, so this is um, for the zoning board of review sitting as the board of appeals meeting, minutes for June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Present at the meeting were Chairman. Joe York, Daniel Harrington, Daniel Berudi, and Solicitor. And the alternate on board was, was Monte and Chip Hale was present remotely with the zoning official, Sherry. Absent was member Ronnie Spadato, alternate member of Bill Scalise and town council leaders on Michael Geary, zoning official Anthony Santelli.
So, so just, just to cut you off for a second. So we didn't have board member Berudi present. Or members Spazada would be able to vote. We have enough here, right? Four?
Is that just a regular meeting?
That was the board of appeals. And that was actually, that was just a point to get us. Oh, yeah, such way. Um, yeah. So we, 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 we knew that was getting punked. So we we voted to do that. Any more discussion? All in favor? That's Ronnie's pacemaker going wrong. I think there's one more. You can just know.
So it was basically just the discussion of the petition and, uh,
Is there another stuff? Is there another date? I think that might have been one before.
Oh, sorry. I didn't have the May twentieth here. That was the June twenty fourth. So there's also a May twentieth meetings that I.
The May twentieth, I believe it was the same board members.
Okay. So this is for the zoning board of review sitting as the board of appeals meeting minutes, May twentieth, twenty twenty one. Um, present was Chairman. Joe York, Ronnie Spazado and Chip Hale, zoning board clerk, Tiana Zartman. Um, absent was alternate member of Bill Scalise, town council leader on Michael Geary, zoning official Anthony Santelli. Solicitor Herr. And so we're sitting as a board of petition. One with respect to the brevity and energy LLC.
So, so again, that was, that was the May meeting, which was a point to get us to the, the June meeting, which so. Um, okay. Could make a motion, we approve. Any discussion? All in favor? Is that the only housekeeping? Any other discussion? We made a motion to continue. Okay. So can I entertain a motion to adjourn? So move. Any discussion further? Good. No hands out there? Okay.